Welcome to the Cross Border Interview Podcast, a podcast about getting out from behind the keyboard and just talking. Each week we invite a guest or two to sit down and talk about their life and their work. I'm Christopher Brown, your host, and this is the Cross Border Interview Podcast featuring-
Town of Oketoga's councillor, Tanya Thorn.
My guest today is the city councillor for Oketoga-
Town councillor.
Town councillor. I knew I was gonna get it wrong.
There you go.
It literally was like, I literally wrote town as well. And for some reason, city is on my mind. You're just close to being a city. You need to become a city.
Well, we actually technically could be a city, but we don't have residents that want to be a city, so.
There you go. Well, town councillor for Oketoga's, Tanya Thorn. Tanya, thank you so much for doing this.
Thanks so much for having me, Chris. I look forward to our conversation.
My first question to all politicians from all backgrounds, from federal, provincial, and municipal, is the very same question. Where did your sense of duty come from?
I kind of actually, at really young age, my family has always been politically active, and I'll say active, maybe involved. So I remember conversations about politics at the dinner table. It wasn't a taboo conversation in our family. We didn't all necessarily agree, but it was talked about. My dad was a municipal councillor. And so, and then my family, we were involved in the community in lots of different ways. My parents were involved with service clubs. My grandparents were involved with service clubs on both sides of my family. So I really grew up with that sense of giving back and being involved in your community. I've always been a bit of a political junkie, so it was just natural for me that might eventually be my place to give back. And as I got older, not that I'm aging, but as I got older, my desire to give back increased, but where I wanted to give back changed. Originally, I really wanted to be involved federally. And then, as I, you know, obviously had a family, all of those things, I saw the impact you could make municipally. And I became very enamored and thus decided that municipal was where it was at for me.
And I find that fascinating because we're going to get into that a little bit during the interview. Municipal politics is the frontline politics of the day-to-day lives of residents from coast to coast to coast and around the world, honestly. To put yourself federally, you go off to Ottawa, provincially, you go off to Edmonton. But municipally, you are on the ground every single day. You are going to be talked to every single day, whether it be going to the grocery store, getting a haircut. Well, not right now during the pandemic, but you are going to be talked to. Was there a decision there to say, okay, I'm giving up part of my life to serve my community when putting my name forward for municipal politics?
Yeah, great question. I don't think it was a conscious decision. I don't think I really appreciated how much of my personal life or my data, my life was going to be impacted by being a municipal elected. When I first got involved, I don't know if I had known what I know now, it would have changed my decision. But I don't think, I think that's probably the one piece that as a municipally elected, you don't realize how, in a non-pandemic world, how front and center you are. Because it's everywhere, right? You go for dinner and I guarantee there's always somebody that stops at my table and, hey, just a quick question. Can you tell me about X, the grocery store? I got to a state that I went really, really early or really, really late. Otherwise, I was an hour and a half to get milk. And that's a good thing because that means the community knows who I am and that is a role, I think, of a municipal elected official. Is that informal, day-to-day connection with your community. It's important. It really is. But I didn't really appreciate the impact that it had on everything else.
How did your family take it? Talking to councillor up in Grand Prairie, he had to separate family time and work time. If he was out at a restaurant, sitting down with his kids and his wife, he would say, not right now. Here's my card. Call me tomorrow. I'd be happy to work with you or talk to you about this issue. Do you have, do you find yourself putting up those boundaries? Or at first you were like, I'm an elected official. I'm happy to help whoever I want. So come and come talk to me whenever you want. But now, as a second-term councillor, you are sort of more reserved about when and how much family time and work time you have?
Yeah, that's definitely something that I think you learn as a skill as you go, is that boundary setting. You know, and social media has a piece of that as well. Because it's not just the public, it's also how you choose to engage on social media. And there's this perception that I've messaged you or I've said something to you, there should be an immediate response, same thing. I see you in the store, you should be able to respond right now. So I really had to get clear of what boundaries made sense for me and my family. So I very rarely go anywhere without a business card so that I can hand that out and say, I really do want to chat about this. Here's my number. Here's my email. But, you know, reach out to me tomorrow or later today or pop me an email and then we can connect. And then same thing with social media. I had to get pretty structured around what does my time commitment on social media look like and how quickly should I respond? Where should I engage those elements? And it all becomes a bit of a balancing act. But I think it's key for municipal, like for any elected official, actually, to really establish what are the boundaries that make sense for yourself and your family and get really clear on what those are and then get really clear about communicating them out to the people you serve.
Let's talk about your first election in 2013, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Correct.
2013, you decided to put your name forward. What was that decision based on?
It was a couple of things. One, I had this recently, well, I kind of knew I was going to run in 2013, but I just, I wasn't really sure about the timing. And I was laid off from a job that I'd had for a long time at the end of August of 2013. And so they were changing positions and whatnot. So I had a package. And I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do when I grew up. So I knew I was wanting to run. So I'm like, okay, well, why don't I put my efforts into this campaign? See where that lands and then I can determine what I'm going to do on the other side of that fence. Because I didn't want to go looking for a job, a full-time job, and then say, oh, and by the way, I'm also going to do this other job. Hope that's okay with you. So I wanted to have, you know, a sense of what was in my world. So that was, that was one of the, I guess, the pieces that set it up well for me to run in 2013. But the other one was, there was conversations happening at that council table that I just didn't see moving forward. I didn't see myself represented in the conversations. I didn't hear my voice in the conversation. And of course, growing up in a political family, I was always kind of taught of you get involved and you can do a lot behind the scenes, which I had kind of tried to do the previous term with various people that were part of the organization. And if that doesn't work, well, then you need to jump into the ring. So I'm like, okay, well, let's just jump and see what happens. And here I am.
So let's talk about that first campaign. No matter who I talk to when it comes to politics, seeing your name on A, a political sign, and B, the ballot are the two of the most surreal things that you'll ever experience in your life. For you, how was it to walk into that ballot booth or put up an electoral election sign if you had them? Because I know some campaigns are hard to finance, but some people try to get the campaign signs out. How was it to see your name on a sign and be on the ballot?
Yeah, I think surreal is probably the right word. You know, you've probably talked to enough of us that it's kind of, what have I, and I think the thought went through my head of, oh my God, what have I done?
Because you know you're gonna get your only, you're gonna get your vote. So you know you're getting one vote unless you don't vote for yourself.
Yeah, exactly. And I think there's that, you know, seeing your name on the ballot, it's, it's, there's a bit of ego, I think, tied up in that. And not that I consider myself in any kind of ego pulp, but I think we all have a bit of ego. And I remember the thought going through my head going, just don't come in last. Just don't come in last. You know, but it was inside, at the same time, it was, it was exhilarating. It was like, okay, this is, I'm really gonna, this is, I'm taking this step and I'm going to be part of my community. And I'm going to drive the future focus of my community going forward. So I was excited about the opportunity.
Getting the news that one has been elected has probably been bestowed to few Canadians across this country. You are one of them municipally. Realizing how much of a weight that now puts on your shoulders because you are now going to affect the day-to-day lives of your residents, your community members, your fair ends, your family. How did you overcome that? Because it is a challenging moment when you have to start affecting people's day-to-day lives in a financial matter.
Yeah. I think I came in naive, really. Maybe that's a good thing. Maybe it's a good thing to come in a little naive. Is I really didn't appreciate the impact that I could make or that I had, that I was part of making. And I think in some respects, municipal politics do a disservice to our municipal electeds because you get elected in October and usually budgets are in November. So you have barely even figured out what you're doing. And here you are dealing with a X million dollar budget and saying, hey, figure it out. What are you going to do here going forward? So it was, in a lot of ways, it was surreal. I feel like I just kind of floated along probably for that first six months, trying to, okay, what have I done here? Like, wow, okay, there's a lot. And I didn't really appreciate, I think, the diversity of work, diversity of focus that municipal electeds have. And I don't think it's just municipal elected. I think it's all electeds, but municipally, you know, like, you're the jack of all trades, but the master of nothing. But we touch everything, right? And so it was, it was, yeah. And as time went on, for me, it's, I'm a big believer in the try and always do what's right, not what's easy, because they're not necessarily the same thing. And so it really, I worked really hard to find different ways to make sure I was engaged with my community in very diverse groups so that I didn't get that myopic or that bias coming in of, oh, well, I know what's right here. But that I reached out into enough different groups to allow me to feel comfortable with making that day-to-day decision of, okay, I've just made this decision to spend $18 million. How do I feel about that? And then I felt comfortable enough that, no, this is the right thing for the community as a whole.
Now, a quick clarification question for you, and you'll probably be able to rant this off pretty quickly. The town of Oketoga's is, their councillors are elected at a ward system or an at-large system?
At-large.
At-large. So you are elected by everyone. So campaigning for that is a lot harder than award system. So take me through that process of how did you get out to every single house or the majority of houses? Because you cannot just rely on your family to vote for you in a large city like, or a large town like yours.
Yeah, well, I was, that first election, I was unemployed, for lack of a better word, when I campaigned, right? So I had this bucket of time. So I door knocked and I made the commitment that I would hit every door in town. And so I door knocked for 30 days. I'd start at, you know, 10:00 AM and I'd go till seven some days. I wish I had actually tracked my kilometers that year because I would love to know how many steps I really took. But I, that was, I'm an old school politician and door knocking is the first and foremost way to get your name out there. So I door knocked and I dropped something at every single door I hit, whether I talked to a person or not. And that was, that was the strategy. That was the plan. And I just put my head down and did my own thing. I didn't really look at what incumbents were doing or what other candidates were doing. I was very focused on, I'm hitting every door in this community.
That's awesome. So before we jump into the next set of questions, which is about the city of Oketoga's, the town of Oketoga's, I will get that right. I will get that right. Because you said at the beginning of the interview, it's not city. I'm like, literally, that's stuck in my head. Before we get into the town issues, I want you to describe what is Oketoga's to my listeners?
Wow, that's a great question. What is Oketoga's? Well, we're a community of really great people, quite honestly. You know, we're 20 minutes from the south end of Calgary. So, you know, I hear it all the time that we're a suburb of Calgary, you know, we're a commuter town. I think we're starting to shift and change that. We're close enough to Calgary that you can run in for some of the great things that are offered in Calgary. But we're now big enough and starting to create our own economic base that we are a place where you can move to and find employment, raise a family, have things for your kids to do, and you're not running all over the country to be able to access those services. We are certainly a regional hub, which creates its own challenges and opportunities, like everything. We live along, we've got right through the middle of our community, the Sheep River. So we've got this natural, beautiful environmental landscape that is probably our key amenity. I consider it our key amenity anyways. Because it's just, it's a great way to be able to connect to nature. Because we've got that natural element in our community, we've invested a lot in pathway systems so that our community can connect to the natural environment. And I can say through this last year, it's been the best investment we've made over all of the years because it's been the most utilized. Because it's the only place everybody's had to be able to get out and connect and be physically active. So that's, that's in the nutshell. That's my community.
You broached the subject, so I'm going to talk about it a little bit here. COVID-19 has hit municipality after municipality all equally. Everyone is struggling right now. How is the town doing?
We're going to have some fiscal challenges that I think we're going to feel impacts with over the next probably three to four years. You know, we were able to move some levers last year that we were able to, you know, reduce taxes. We held taxes low again this year. But you can only do that so long. So fiscally, we've got a few things that are going to rub. Obviously, our rec center, we're beginning of March. It's been closed again here for another three months. That's a significant hit to revenue. Yes, you offset expenses to a degree, but we still run a ice plant. We still run a pool, all of those things. Because we thought it was only going to be, you know, three weeks. So we didn't close. And that was only supposed to be another two weeks and it didn't open. And so, you know, we were lucky. We didn't pull the trigger and pull out our ice and drain our pool like some other communities did because of anticipated expectations of what was going to happen. But that's going to be a hit. I think probably the biggest impact, though, our small business community is struggling, like everybody's small business community is struggling. And our residents are struggling just from a mental health perspective, a social connection perspective. I think Oketoga's has done a lot of really great events over the years. And our community has always been really well-connected through those. And we've been a year without any of that community gathering piece. And I think it's probably the biggest impact to our community. And the piece for me anyways, as an elected official, that I'm most focused on right now is how to start building back those connections, either in a different format, in a different environment of how do we do that with COVID in the mix?
And there's plans already going, getting underway to look at that potential relaunch of the economy, relaunch of the community facilities?
Yeah, so there'll be an announcement, I think, well, March 1st, so today. So we'll be seeing some stuff that'll open up here next week. We've started some, a variety of different programs. We've started a community champion program, which has residents, you know, deciding they're going to be a community champion. But they get tasked with a bunch of different stuff and we provide them toolkits to connect with their neighbors and create that neighborhood connection. So we've seen a lot of that over the last year of more connected neighbors, which I think will create the environment for a more connected community. But it's the one, it's the people that are potentially in the gap, right? That you don't recognize that they haven't come out and you, you don't really know who they are or they're, they are staying inside because they're in a high-risk group and they're not connecting. It's those people that I'm, it's that demographic, I guess, that I'm working with. And it's not even a specific demographic because I think it's across all demographics. But yeah, we're moving some stuff forward as we reopen a little bit more. You're seeing it. Spring is coming. I keep saying spring is here, but it's not quite here. You know, so we're seeing more people use the pathways, more people are out and walking in groups, which I think is great.
Depending on which councillor I would ask on town council, I would get a different answer for this. So for my listeners, please be advised that this is, this question is directed just to councillor Thorn. It is not directed to each individual councillor. So councillor Thorn, what are the biggest issues facing the residents of Oketoga's right now? In your opinion?
In my opinion, yeah. I think there's a few things. One-
And we know that COVID-19, without taking COVID-19 out of the picture, what are the three biggest issues that are facing the town of Oketoga's in their residents today?
Yeah, I think there's a few. One is a water, we've got a water challenge. I want to say that the water challenge has been solved, but until we actually put a pipe in the ground and we turn water on and there's water flowing from it, I don't have it solved yet. We've got lots of pieces in place now and we're further along than we've ever been. So I feel optimistic about that, that hopefully it won't be an election issue this year that will be far enough along that it's not going to be another election issue. But that's, that's one. It just percolates under everything. You know, it impacts what our development's going to look like. So it's there. That's one. Housing's probably another. And it comes from a couple of different lenses. Affordable housing in that, you know, we tend to be a higher price point community. We don't have a ton of rentals available in our communities. So a lot of our employees in retail particularly can't afford to live here. So they're commuting out. So, you know, we, I talked earlier about us being kind of a commuter town. We actually have traffic that leave our community to go to work and then we have traffic that comes to our community for work. So we need to find a way to keep, in my opinion, both of those here because both of them are an economic drain on the community. And affordable housing is going to be one of those. But I think it's more than just affordable housing. It's actually a diversification of housing in terms of the type of housing that's available. And if you can diversify the type of housing that's available, I'm a big believer that that creates affordability just in itself. So if you can have duplexes and apartments and row housing, small, single-family homes, you know, single-family homes with the front detached garage, all of that variety. You know, single-family homes that have a studio suite already factored into it. All of those increase affordability and create that diversification. And, you know, housing for me is a big one in terms of a variety of different housing types, but also in terms of that those housing types exist in the same neighborhoods. We've planned and developed communities where, okay, this, you know, six-block radius are small starter homes. And, okay, over here is the, you know, mid-size, single-family home. And then over here is your estate living and over here is your bungalows. And so that in itself impacts social connection in our communities. Because as you stage through life, you have to move to different neighborhoods. So all of that is fine, I think, when you've got families still at home and you've got kids at home because that creates those connections. But when you're starting to look at moving as, you know, empty nesters, seniors, or even just young professionals coming into a neighborhood, it makes it hard to connect them with the people you connect, you have to move away from. So I'm a big believer of trying to create that in a smaller radius. That if you do have to move for your life changes, you're still connected to people in that same neighborhood. So housing, water. And then I think there's another piece and that is, and I think this actually exists in every community, it's a breakdown in trust of our government institutions. And I won't even say government. I think institutions, just in general, there's a breakdown in trust. So there needs to be a real a real conversation around transparency, accountability. What does public engagement look like? What, what makes you feel trust? How do we build trust? And we need to get back to the basics of having that respectful discourse to create that environment again. And our community isn't immune to that, just like most, I think it's across the country. And everybody's dealing with it in a different, at a different level. Let's put it that way. So those would be my three, I think.
The reason I ask that is I do research for these interviews. I don't write down questions, but I do do research for these interviews. And I happened to stumble upon your 2017 reelection campaign website, which is still linked to your Twitter account. So that's where I found it. And the last post, and this was the fascinating thing, Thorn's Vision for 2030 is your last post. And in that post, you identify three things. One of them is one that you just spoke about. 10 to 15 years focus on children, diversification of housing, and community of innovation. Have you accomplished any or are you starting work on any of those three?
I think there's a piece that we're doing on all of them. So with innovation, we've done a few things with that. And that, part of that is getting your own organization ready. You know, we use innovation as a buzzword, but if you don't have your own organization ready to be innovative, you, you can't be innovative, right? If we're, if we're so defined to being in the box. And I think, you know, one of the things around innovation that still needs to happen for our community anyways, is if you really want to be innovative, there has to be some community acceptance that we might fail, that we might not get it perfect. And so it's one of those ones that, as I've been on the other side of the fence as the elected, you know, that have really come to really see that, that rub that exists of, we say we want government to be innovative. We want government to be efficient. We want government to operate like a business. But yet, we expect government to be perfect. We expect government to be able to sit under this, under this level of scrutiny that no business out there is under. And so that impedes the ability to be innovative because we're so determined to be perfect. So I think that's a shift in the conversation that has to happen of what is the range that us as residents, as voters are willing to accept to be innovative and try something new? What is the goalpost, I guess, is what we call them? That we're willing to tolerate that you might not get it right, but we're moving in the right direction. And so that innovation piece is, is one that there needs to be some work on. We've done a few things with that. You know, we've got a few projects that are coming that are like, okay, we're, it's there. Children and youth, I think there's a lot we've done on that in terms of our municipal development plan. Our kids wouldn't look at it that way. They won't see it. But I see it in that long-range planning for what communities are going to look like and creating that fiscal sustainability of our community going forward. So I see that as an investment in our kids. They probably will look at me and go, why do I care about that? But so that's one element of it that I think is key. And of course, that falls into the housing diversification part of it as well. But I really do also think that there needs to, as elected officials, we have to find a better way to tap into the thinking of our youth. And, and I'm yet undetermined as to what age group that makes. You know, I typically present the grade sixes on local government every year. And some of the ideas they have are fascinating. And I'm like, why don't I have them as my little resource in my, you know, innovative boot camp? Because they have, they have no, they don't have any structure around why something's not possible. Everything's possible for them still, right? So I think that governments need to find a way to tap into that thinking a bit more. And we'll build more communities or more functionality for kids.
Speaking of children, and this is why I brought it up. What's the retention of children staying in the town after they graduate university, after they graduate college? Because that is one of the major issues that is facing smaller rural, and I know- And I know Oketoks is not a rural community, far from it, but it is not a major hub like Calgary, Edmonton, Red Deer, even Medicine Hat or Lethbridge. What is the retention of keeping families in Oketoks like?
Yeah, I actually don't have a stat in front of me and I can't pull it off the top of my head. But anecdotally, from my perspective, we have still a lot of kids that go away to school. Some of them come back, but housing impacts their ability to come back because they can't afford to come back unless they move in with mom and dad. And I love my 21-year-old daughter, but I'm not sure I want her to move back in with me.
You heard that here first, daughter.
Yeah, exactly. No, she's heard that indirectly multiple times. And she'd say the same thing, right? And that's part of that experience of growing up and being an adult, not that I'd ever turn her away from the door, right? But is that, how do they come back to their home community and get started? When, you know, rents are $1,500 a month in Oketoks. And, you know, you can't get into anything really under $375,000. So how does a young professional that's just getting started able to do that? And even as a, you know, a teenager that's graduated from high school, but you're not quite sure where you want to go off and do. But you know, you don't want to live at home anymore. It's hard to transition out of home in this community. But I do think there's some things that are happening. One, there has been a significant increase in the diversity of housing. There's a lot more purpose-built projects that are coming our way from a rent perspective. So that will help drive down that price. We've got a new build for an arts and learning campus that has Bow Valley College, expanding their space by about three times. So there's more post-secondary education opportunities in Oketoks. And all of those things will cater to our kids staying home longer. I do see an increase of kids talking about coming back to Oketoks. You know, I'll use my family. My family moved here in 1988. I went away to university. I granted it was only to Calgary, but I went away to school in Calgary, not far, but far enough. But I ultimately, when I was pregnant with my daughter, I moved back to Oketoks. My brother and sister, same thing, both went off, did their thing. Both are here raising their families. So we've all come back, which if you surveyed my parents in 1988 when we moved here, if that was ever going to happen, the answer would have been a hard no. We will never live in the same community. But we're all here. So we all found our way back home. And I think that that's the attraction of Oketoks. It's a great community for raising families. And you're seeing more of that generational connection of, you know, grandparents being here with families is that piece. So I think it's an attraction point.
One of your other political jobs outside of town councillor is, and I want to make sure I get this right. So please correct me if I'm wrong. You are the AUMAs vice president and director of Towns South, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
So for my listeners, what is that job and title?
So AUMA is an organization that represents all urban municipalities across the province, from your summer villages, villages, towns, specialized municipalities, and your mid-sized cities, your cities. So I sit on a board of directors of 15. We are kind of an advocacy group, I'll say, between our municipalities, our members and the provincial government particularly. You know, we do a little bit with the federal government, but we kind of default to our, our national organization, which is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, who work more at that level. Yeah, so that's kind of, I guess, in a nutshell, AUMA, we have, you know, we try and create services for our members, I guess. You know, and we, AUMA has been around since 1905. I don't quote me on that date. I think that's right. And we're representing those municipalities where 85% of Albertans live. We do a lot of advocacy services. We provide business services to our members, you know, so things like insurance, employee benefits, retirement, energy, short-term investments, purchasing with that. And yeah, so I sit on the board that helps make those decisions and determine our direction with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And I'm going to follow that up with towns, villages, smaller communities often, and I hate to use this word. I only use this word is because another municipal politician used this word, get the breadcrumbs. They don't get the big checks like the cities do, like Calgary, like Edmonton. Nothing wrong with that. It's just when provincial or federal politicians are looking at doling out money, they're looking at where the electoral votes come from. And for a town that is one electoral district compared to a city, which is 36 electoral districts or 26th electoral district, or however many are in Calgary, I apologize. It's hard to get notice. How do you, on the AUMA board, ensure that while we have to look after our cities, the towns don't get forgotten, the villages don't get forgotten?
Yeah. I'm not 100% certainly agree with that statement, honestly.
And tell me where I'm wrong. Tell me where I'm wrong.
Yeah, and it's not necessarily that it's wrong. It's that, you know, I think all of our municipalities receive funding. Hard stop right there. They all receive funding. The check just happens to be bigger for our cities, which when our cities are a million people, so using the city of Calgary and a million people, probably makes sense that it's a bit bigger than the village that is 50 people. You know.
But the needs are not different because the village that is 1,000 people still has water issues. That is still going to cost the same as if it was Calgary.
Maybe on a per capita basis, it's going to be smaller scale, but the needs are still the same. I all agree with that, you know, the, the services you need to provide, the basic services, let's put it that way, are the same across every municipality, right? We want to make sure our residents are safe. We want to make sure they have clean drinking water. We want to make sure that clean drinking water goes away when it's dirty water and it's managed, right? So, and that they feel safe in the communities that they're in and there's some amenities for the communities they're in. So I think recognizing that piece, that's where the value of AUMA, I think, comes into, is that not every municipality across the province needs to go and knock on the province's door and say, hey, remember me? I'm from the, you know, I can't use the town of Oketoks, we're a relatively big town, but I'm from town XYZ and we need you to talk to us about water. Whereas AUMA can advocate on the top end of, okay, we need to talk about water infrastructure in this province and how to manage it in a better, cost-effective, more efficient manner. And I peck on water a lot and wastewater in that the infrastructure that's required to manage it is expensive. So what are we doing as a province, as municipalities to innovate around that? And so, you know, there's some work that's being done currently with AUMA and some of our member municipalities to move a project forward with Alberta Environment on wastewater management, actually, that has the potential to save millions of dollars in infrastructure. But we need to get rid of, we need to, I won't say relax the regulations, we need to get the regulations to move with new innovations that are out there and, and be able to try them and go, oh, it still gives us the same outcome. And I think that that's the shift that needs, that AUMA allows us to have, is that we can really focus on, okay, well, we're all striving for this outcome. Is there a different box we can use to get the same outcome instead of always saying it has to be this box? Does that?
It does. It does. And I thank you for clarification for that because, like I said, I've talked to many municipal leaders and I'm just getting from what other people have said. And I'm just, I need, if you don't know until you ask the question, correct?
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely. And I think too, you know, the, we all tend to get focused on the myopic view of, well, my municipality needs instead of how do we all work together to make sure that we all are moving forward in the best manner? And that is going to require, as we move forward, I think municipalities are in this great spot of being able to lead some change and look at things from a different lens and propose different solutions. Because dollars aren't going to be in the format they've always been. We're not going to have the same revenues. We just don't. You know, we're going to see a shrinking in budgets. Residents are requiring, are demanding more transparent and better accountability in terms of how their tax dollars are being spent. So we're going to need to start looking at how do we build recreation for our municipality and do it better? So, you know, this concept of regional, of how do we work together as a region to service the same outcomes for the region as a whole? And maybe we don't need an ice rink in every municipality within 20 kilometers of each other, as an example, right? So how do we maximize that? But it is going to require all of us as politicians to put down that lens of it's about me and how do we make it about us, if that makes sense?
It does. One of the big things that you just mentioned there, and I want to touch on it briefly here, communications. Communication is key when it comes to working with other municipalities around you at a regional level, working with municipalities across Alberta, working with your residents. How has the town, how has the town worked to improve their communication since you've been councillor? Because I will say, you are one of the few active councillors on Twitter who post on a regular basis. So props to you for being transparent, as you've said, and being open and being accessible on social media. So is that something that you've just done by yourself or is that a direction of the town?
No, and from, I, I'm a big believer that as an elected official, you need to be on social media. Social media is a tool that can be used for a variety of things. One, to communicate a message. But the other is to actually listen to what is happening or what, and again, you need to take it, social media with a lens because it doesn't represent the entire community. There's a population there, but.
What are you talking about? The minority of people who use social media are not the regular people who are out there?
I know it's shocking to most, but yes, that is, that is the, the data that I have managed to derive. But it's, it's a tool. So I have made that conscious decision of I will be on social media on a daily basis. So I tend to post to Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn on occasion, on a relatively consistent basis. And some of it is here's stuff that's happening in our community. So here's decisions councils made. And I try and keep it in that fact, here's what happened, here's what we decided, this is why the decision was made. And keep that as much as I can, keep the emotional piece out of it. Sometimes that's harder said than done. And then also use it as a tool to, what do you think about this? How do you feel about this? Because it does create that dialogue and you need to have a space for dialogue. And there is a group of people that want to dialogue on social media. So I have made that decision for myself personally. It's good and it's.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, from a town's perspective, how has the town better communicated to his residents? Because again, two of the things that you mentioned on your website, I keep on going back to that website. If you, if a politician leaves up a website, I will, I will jump onto it. One of the two things that you wanted to do in your first term was better communication and citizens budget. Those are two items that I really focused in on. Has that continued on into your second term?
From my perspective, yes, but I think the communication has come from me. The town does communicate. They have their own social media platforms. They put information out there. But I think that government communication is still an area that we need to get better at. We need to, I sometimes feel, and this is my feeling on it, that as government, so as the town of Oketoks, I'll say, there's a fear with communicating in that, you know, they will, again, back to that whole perfectionist concept, right? So there's a fear in giving you information because you might misunderstand the information. It might get construed wrong. We might not present it quite right. So we hold on to the information instead of I come from a philosophy of I'm going to throw as much information that I know at you and then we can have a conversation. Because if we're not on the same playing field for information understanding, we can't have a really great dialogue. And if I'm holding it tight, I'm not empowering you to give me good information to make a good decision, right? So it's kind of a twofold. So we are getting better at communication, but it is still an area that you can't do alone, right? Communications are two ways, two-way street. So I put all the information. Go ahead.
How is it from residents? How, how is the return from residents? Because while, like you said, I'm in the opinion of you, if, if you put out all the information you can, it's, it's then determined by the resident or the other stakeholders to read the information. You can only go X amount of miles before the other person has to pick up the baton and start going. So from your perspective, how has the flip side been? Have you heard from residents? We need more information on this. We need more, we need more communications on why council did this. We appreciate that you're doing this.
Sort of. We've got a small group, I will say, that keeps demanding more information. Or I think from myself personally, I feel they put a bit of a lens of that we're trying to hide something. But, you know, there's that, again, that comes back to that trust in government, right? So there's always that little nuance of it's not quite right, you know? So I think that that's the challenge with it. And because it's not an effective medium to debate on, social media, I know, again, another shocking statement. You, you, you're able to put out information that maybe isn't factual, but that's what gets shared. And it doesn't matter that I commented, you know, 42 people later and said, well, actually, this is really the truth. That doesn't get shared. So it's a hard place to have some of that dialogue, which is partly for me, why I've really focused on my own social media channels and putting out the information there in my own post and letting people share it from that. Because I, it's not about controlling the message, but it's, it's, I really have worked hard to try and create it of this is a place of truth. Here's the truth on XYZ situation. What everybody chooses to do with that and where they go for their truth, I can't control.
So the reason I ask about communication is, you didn't know this was coming, so I apologize if you do want me to stop this. You probably know the question I'm going to ask here because it was in the news a few weeks ago. And communication is key during these situations. There was a toboggan hill in your town. It was removed. It was a children's toboggan hill and communications is key. You probably heard from the majority of residents after that issue saying, why did you remove it? Communication is key in that situation. From your perspective, would better communication have helped ease the situation? Because it was in the news for some time.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think any situation that goes awry, doesn't matter whose or what situation it is, you can always comment, you can always loop it back to communication. So there is certainly was a gap in our process in terms of how our, you know, if the phone call had come into our bylaw team, there would have been a different process followed by bylaw than the fact that it came into our operations team. So we, we identified that gap in the process. I think, you know, there was mistakes made on all sides of the fence of this scenario. And it's, it's a great example of the good and the bad of social media. You know, and sometimes when we go to social media and we post with emotion, which I talked about earlier, it has the ability to blow up a situation that really didn't need to be blown up. Did the town make mistakes? We sure did. But we made sure as soon as we were able to connect with that resident, we tried to rectify those mistakes to the best that we could. But it wasn't done with, to destroy kids' fun. That, you know, it wasn't done with any ill intent. Our crews didn't come there to, with malice in their hearts. They truly thought they were solving a problem because we had snow piles like that all over the community that our crews were removing. Because we had piled them. And I really truly know that our staff showed up there thinking, crap, we missed removing this snow pile. We've got to fix this. And that was their intent, right? And so when we don't communicate and we don't give both sides the chance to really own their piece in the puzzle, that results in the breakdown that occurred and the social media storm that occurred with this incident. You know, so yeah, but it comes back down to communication. If we had just knocked on the door to start with, it probably would have been a whole different conversation, right?
Yeah. Thank you for explaining that because, like I said, it is something that has been in the news and as we're on communication, and communication is key, especially in those situations. So it was just one of those moments that I wanted to take and let you address it. We have about ten minutes left here, so I want to move on to a subject that is my favorite subject when we talk about these. And councillors seem to enjoy when I ask them this. Why should people visit the town of Oktoks? What is so special about the town of Oktoks that people need to stop in?
There's lots of things I think I could list. You'd think I'd have a prepared thing since I knew we were gonna talk about this, but I don't. When we are, we are just one of the most friendly communities. And I can't say we're one of the most friendly because I think every community in Alberta that you go into is friendly. But we are a change of pace. You know, we've got this amazing pathway system through our river valley that you can come and you can walk, bike, you know, and get connected that way to nature in a different way, but still in that urban setting. So that when you decide you need a coffee, you can hit the local coffee store and have your coffee. Or if you want to stop at the local brewery, you can sit and, you know, have a brew right on Main Street. We've got a really diversifying Main Street. We've got some really cute, unique shops. I think we are a ladies' shopping destination, quite frankly. We've got some fabulous clothing stores. We've got this new wine bar that's opening up. So those are all elements, I think, from a experience perspective. We're close enough to Calgary and it's easy. You can park once in Oktoks and you can hit all of those spots within a thirty-minute walk. And who doesn't need a thirty-minute walk?
Why should people move to Oktoks?
Oh, we're a connected community in some respects. One, I think your schools are local, you know, kids, most kids in Oktoks could walk to school. Not that we let our kids walk to school anymore, but that's a whole different conversation in itself, Chris. But we're close enough that you could, your kids can all walk to school. We've got a great school system. With that, you know, you're not, we don't have, well, we have crowded classrooms because every classroom is crowded, it feels like, but
Another conversation for another day.
Another conversation, different day, exactly. You're, we're a recreation Mecca. You know, if your kids love sports and play competitive sports, they can find it here. You know, we're a baseball haven, a hockey haven. You know, my good daughter grew up playing competitive volleyball, so that exists in the region as well. So we've got lots of these great caliber sports, but at the same time, we've got enough fields and, well, nobody will tell you that we've got enough sports facilities, so I should be careful about those words, that we've got enough. But we've got access for your kids to get out and just play at a recreation level too, whether that's soccer, hockey, baseball, basketball. You know, we've got a growing basketball contingent in our community, which has taken a huge hit with COVID. But that's another issue like everywhere else. So that you can move to a community and there's, you can do everything here. Like there's very little that I have to go to Calgary for. All my shopping's here. We've got Costco. So like, if you want to shop at Costco, ours is a quiet Costco. Another reason to come out from Calgary because we are quieter than any Costco in Calgary every day of the week. You know, and so come and check out Costco and then come and check out a couple of places downtown. You know, there's some really great shopping in our community. So those would be some of the highlights. When we get back to events, we host some great events in this community.
Like what?
Well, I'll give you my, my three favorites.
That's what I was looking for.
Parade Day, which is usually mid-June. So Parade Day and our Children's Festival typically is mid-June. It's, in my opinion, the best community gathering event. And our, our businesses in our community really get involved in putting in floats and our parade route's getting much too long. I can be, we're, council's typically near the front of the parade. And we're finishing before they're through the end of it. So it's Yeah, you know, and so it's a nice long route and it's great to see the community come out and be on the sidewalks and that whole piece of the parade. And then a Children's Festival in the afternoon, so it's an all-day event. Chili Fest is another one. So we've got lots of businesses that get involved or groups that get involved and make chili. And again, it's down on Main Street. And if you are a chili fan, you can usually find something that, that hits the, hits the mark. I've been the judge a couple of times and, yeah, there's days when I'm like, okay, that was not, that was not it for me. Or, oh, my God, give me some milk because that was hotter than I was to it. So, but it's another one of those great events where, you know, it just brings the community together. And then we do light up Oktoks in November. We light our Christmas tree downtown. Lots of our businesses participate and get lights up. And, you know, we put about anywhere between ten to fifteen thousand people in our downtown corridor. And it is, it's just, it doesn't matter when it's, whether it's minus thirty or minus five, people come out for it and it's just, it's a fun night. And, yeah, I hope we will get back to having some of those again soon because I miss them.
Here's hope. And I will be there for the next Chili Fest because I'm a massive chili fan. I've competed in a few of my own chili competitions as well, so I will be there.
Excellent.
Last set of questions before we leave, and you, you expect this, you expected this to come. Twenty twenty-one, we are in an election year. This is going out in, I think, at the end of May, middle of May, end of May. Can we expect to see councillor Tanya Thorne's name on the town ballot one more time for a third time?
Probably. I honestly, I waffle from day to day. And I still feel that I have something to offer to my community. So I feel there's still work undone. But at the same time, it's been a really hard term. You know, it's not exactly what honestly, any politician at any level signed up for. And, and I'm kind of tired in some respects. So I'm really weighing the, you know, is now the time to transition back into private industry? You know, if I, if I do run another term, what does that look like? Where do I fit? How do I move my initiatives? I'm not, I'm not a politician. I know that sounds funny coming from my mouth as an elected official, but I am not a career politician. So I really do believe that there's a time limit on elected officials. So I've been eight years and I'm really trying to determine, is one more term? Does that, does that allow me to finish what I need to do? And if I have, I'm not able to accomplish it, part of me feels like new blood needs to be there. So there, there's not, that's my way of not directly answering your question because I haven't actually completely decided.
For not a politician, you seem to have the politician answer down pat there.
Well, you know, and I think that's the other thing about this year that's changed, right? Typically, election periods typically, well, for my last two elections, one month, right? So I haven't really had to make the decision. I might be had it in my mind, but people didn't talk about it until maybe August, beginning of September. It started to float around. But with the new Election Act and the election rules, nomination day happened January first of this year, right? So that conversation has started now. But I'm not a huge believer in long election periods and, and campaign periods. Like there's still work to be done in my community and I really would like to focus on that work. And when I'm, you know, when, when we get closer to October eighteen, then I'll be like, okay, let's, now we can get into campaign mode, but it's too early to be in campaign mode right now. One, that requires a whole level of energy that I don't want to put into campaigning at this moment in time. There's some key things that our community still needs to get done and I want to focus on those.
So to follow up on that, for someone thinking about running for municipal politics this year, what would you say to them? What advice would you give?
One, the one thing I tell every single one of them is to read Daniel Klooster's book, Five Reasons to Not Run for Municipal Elections. So you should read that book. That's the first thing you should do. And if any of that stuff in that book resonates with you, probably not a good job for you to get involved with. But if after you read it, you go, oh, yeah, no, I totally see it this other way, then, you know, I think that's a good starting point. There's lots of material out there, whether that's on the AUMA site, whether it's in the municipality you're looking at running. They'll have some election material for you in terms of what's involved, what's entailed. Download it. Have a look. Take one of your local councillors or your local mayor for coffee and ask them questions. That's probably where I'd tell you to start. To really flesh out what the job entails. From my perspective, it's a great job. I love what I do. I'm really passionate about it. I think it's an amazing way to serve your community. And it's an amazing way to have an impact on your community. You know, you can, there's little things you can do that just makes the world a difference to your neighbor or, you know, that lady down the street. And that's really rewarding. But it's also one of those jobs that is, you know, you're, there's not a placard that's being waved about how awesome you are every day of the year. That doesn't happen. So, you know, you need to be prepared for that of, you know, there's gonna be people that, it doesn't matter what you do. They won't like anything you've done. And there'll be other people that are really happy that you're there. So you need to be prepared for that. But those would be my starting thoughts on it. It's a rewarding job. I really think that more women need to get involved. Just to plug that female. We still do not have the level of representation. I think in Alberta, it's twenty-six percent. I think it's twenty-six percent that are females. You know, we represent just over fifty percent of the population, but we're not fifty percent of the decision makers and that's a problem. Women bring, women tend to be more collaborative. And, and I think that that adding that to that table creates a different conversation. I've seen it at our own council table, just a different lens and a different approach can make a world of difference in solutions. So I really encourage women to look at it and consider it. Their voice is needed at the table and they bring a huge value to that table if they decide to get involved.
Awesome. Councillor, I want to thank you so much for doing this. Greatly appreciated. For my listeners, I will link the councillor's Twitter, Facebook and Instagram in the show notes. That way you can go follow her because I highly recommend her. She highly recommend it. She is one of the few politicians who are actively engaged on social media. So councillor, once again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time, Kristen. Thanks for inviting me.
Thank you once again for listening to the Cross Border Interview Podcast. If you loved this episode of the Cross Border Interview Podcast, head over to iTunes or wherever you get your podcasts and subscribe, rate us and leave us a review. All the links to our social media accounts are in the show notes or visit www.crossborderinterviews.ca. The Cross Border Interview Podcast was produced and edited by Miranda Brown and Associates Incorporated. Be sure to tune in for our next episode of the Cross Border Interview Podcast. Once again, thank you.